Just, we were just waiting for Ms Davis to come back, but we'll start the swearing in process if that's okay. So, for the sake of formalities, we're online? Yep. I welcome our next witnesses, Professor Elizabeth Danny-Wilson.
Hello.
Ms Haylock Chang, Ms Emily Casca and Ms Pavana Sarin.
Yeah.
Thank you for appearing before the committee today to give evidence. Please note that the committee staff will be taking photos and videos during the hearing. The photos and videos may be used for social media and public engagement purposes on the Legislative Assembly's social pages and websites. But please let committee staff know if you object to having these photos and videos taken. Before we start, do any of you have any questions about the hearing process that you're appearing in today? Okay. As part of the formalities, can you please take the oath or make an affirmation? And I might just go from my left across to the right in terms of taking the oath or an affirmation?
Thank you. I, Emily Casca, swear that the evidence I shall give before this committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me go on.
Thank you, Ms Sarin.
Yeah. I, Pavana Sarin, do hereby affirm and declare that the evidence I shall give before this committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Ms Danny-Wilson.
I, Elizabeth Danny-Wilson, do hereby affirm and declare that the evidence I shall give before this committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
And Ms Chang.
I, Haylock Chang, do hereby affirm and declare that the evidence I shall give before this committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you all so much. Going back in the opposite order, would you like to make a brief opening statement before we begin questions?
Yes, from me, thank you.
Go ahead.
So, thank you for giving the Centre of Research Excellence in Translating Early Prevention of Obesity in Childhood and Opportunity today. Our collaboration conducts research focusing on early prevention of obesity, which means promoting healthy growth and development, especially in the first year of life. We work with child and family health nurses and other primary care providers to develop trial and implement interventions. This is my granddaughter Georgia's Blue Book. For the past year, my daughter Louisa, as a first-time parent, has relied on the services provided in her local child and family health centre. Like many first-time parents before her, she accessed parenting sessions available in her neighbourhood. She was supported to breastfeed and was referred to lactation consultants when she needed further help. In this first year, her child and family health nurse Stephanie made sure my granddaughter was meeting milestones like talking, crawling and walking, and made sure she was growing well. She assessed her length, her weight and her head circumference, her vision and her hearing. She provided enormous reassurance that my granddaughter was growing and developing well. Child and family health nurses are the cornerstone of this care and offer health, development and wellbeing checks for children and support education and information on parenting for all families. Now, rapid weight gain or excessive weight gain in the first year of life is one of the stickiest risk factors for child obesity. Child and family health nurses are one of the first health professionals who can spot health and development issues and refer on to specialist support as needed. In our research with nurses, they've told us that their work in promoting health and preventing unhealthy weight gain is challenged by limited time and staffing to see families and have enough time to work through the barriers in promoting healthy growth, eating and play. And importantly, there are no routine visits between six and 12 months, a time when unhealthy weight gain can occur and when early intervention to assess what and how a baby is being fed is crucial in preventing excess or rapid weight gain. Research by our team has shown that child and family health nurses are best placed to deliver two effective obesity prevention programmes, the Healthy Beginnings Programme in New South Wales and the Infant Programme in Victoria. But these programmes aren't reaching all families. Families from culturally and linguistically diverse populations face challenges that could be overcome with more translators and bi-cultural workers, culturally appropriate messages and resources and improved accessibility. EPOC Translate, Centre of Research Excellence, emphasised the importance of early intervention to ensure healthy growth and identify risks for excess weight gain in the universal health model across the entire first year of life. This will require an investment in child and family health nurses, bi-cultural workers and translators to offer this vital public health service, especially for vulnerable families. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms Sarin?
Mine's a very short one. So, my name is Pavana Sarin. First of all, thank you for giving me an opportunity to say this, to put forward my views, actually it's the organisation view alongside. So, my name is Pavana Sarin and I work as an early intervention family worker in Community Migrant Resource Centre in Parramatta. My organisation, though, has not made a submission for the inquiry, but I, but work with migrants, refugees, culturally and linguistically diverse communities, supporting them to adjust and integrate within Australia. As a family worker myself, I have an opportunity to work with families with children from zero to eight years of age. And from professional as well as personal experience, I recognise the importance of early childhood health checks alongside development checks. I have seen how early detection of development delays and early intervention improves the quality of life for both children and families. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms Casca?
Thank you and thank you for the opportunity to present. On behalf of Playgroup New South Wales, I am six days into my new role. Droning at the deep end, right? But I've been following the organisation for a long time and I have a big history in the disability sector, so it all crosses over. So, in terms of Playgroup New South Wales, we've been around for 50 years. We provide 550 playgroups every week. We have 65,000 families and members across New South Wales, across 90% of postcodes in New South Wales. So, our reach is there. And I think in terms of this inquiry, I think we provide a bit of a multifaceted perspective in terms of early childhood health and development broadly and to the checks. So, playgroups by design also enhance early childhood development and health. There's plenty of research that I'll quickly touch on that shows that. We also, they play that role in helping families understand what the checks are and also help them how to access them, and I'll touch on that. But then also where those checks happen, where delays or concerns might be identified, we then also provide the follow-up service through our either community playgroups, but we also have First Nations specific, called specific and supported disability specific playgroups. And we also have some awesome intergenerational playgroups with grandparents as well. And we have a real focus on regional and rural communities, which I know is part of the terms of reference here. So, we know that naturally a really critical prevention and early intervention measure in those early years is access to these formal checks. But I just wanted to give context about what happens before and after those checks because they don't sit in isolation. Probably at a high level, the five key recommendations from us, because we didn't make a submission, I'm afraid, is that firstly, developmental screening and checks need to happen in place where families are, in the spaces, models that they trust and that they're familiar with. And naturally, playgroups provide that. Families really need to feel safe and supported in that space. And I'm sure all that I've been listening in to last week and today, everyone agrees with that. Peer support is so critical to the journey. It can't be a transactional checks approach. And again, that's where we see the strength in playgroups. Families learn from families and it's so powerful. I think what my colleagues have touched on in their submissions as well and the ones before us, is that families that are already facing systemic barriers or issues, they need really soft entry points. And we have a play van, as an example, here in Parramatta, that we can't keep up with demand, so we take the services to the people in their local community that has a particularly high call and isolated family access. And this model, we then provide screening. We bring in health educators into that model. It's consistent, it's regular and it's mobile. So, that's something that's working. Investment is needed to make that process a lot smoother. That's probably no surprising, but everything from apps to transport to get to the checks, interpretation about the checks. The Blue Book is great, and I know I was part of a consult last year with New South Wales Health to digitise the Blue Book. We couldn't support that anymore because where a delay or a diagnosis might be found, my background is in Down syndrome, it would be great to have those developmentally-specific birth charts access to support, which the current print version of the Blue Book doesn't do. And it can obviously isolate those families. And lastly, something to note is that families often need access to checks outside regular business hours, and that's something that we hear a lot. The only other things I'll touch on, just specific to playgroups, is that data demonstrates that around 35% of children that attend, 35% of children attend a playgroup before they start school. Interestingly, which relates to the terms of reference, we find that children in regional and remote communities are more likely to attend playgroups than they are in metro. So, I think that's interesting from an access point of view. Not surprisingly though, but necessary to note, is children from First Nations populations and from called populations and boys are less likely. And that's something that we're really focusing on. And again, an access point, I think, for these terms of reference. But playgroups by their very nature inherently, we enhance child development. By our design, we enhance parent capacity. And that is, I think, a key recommendation that we would make to this inquiry, that building and supporting parent capacity is key and their confidence and their connection with the system. And the fact that we are locally present drives that connection and the engagement. And then there's that universality of our playgroup ecosystem that we think could really enhance and complement the very focus of this inquiry, which is how do we get more children and more families accessing these early childhood checks as early as possible?
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Pretty good for six days.
Sorry?
Pretty good for six days.
Thank you. Now, don't ask me any questions. No, I'm kidding.
So, the first question by design is a really softball, easy answer. I think, I might have just heard the answer to this question from Playgroup. But, I mean, what do you see, for the record, what do you see working well out there? Like, what methodologies have been used out there that you think work well in terms of these young people getting access to all these health checks along their way during their development and progress? So, I'll just go from left to right if that's okay? My left?
Yes, back to me.
I think I might have just heard that.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I think that the agreement that's been reached in the early childhood setting is definitely something we would like replicated across the playgroup ecosystem because we do, data shows us playgroups do tend to get in earlier. We have more reach, not all children go into the formal early childhood space. So, we would like to see that as a fairly quick win. It's a model that we could just extrapolate out further. I think, secondly, probably some more, like I think our supported playgroup and community playgroup, First Nations, that's a great thing that is working. Some of it is state-funded, some of it is federally funded. But I think more investment in that because, like I've said, we know that in-place local support works. And I think some more investment and maybe some more formalisation of the ability to bring health practitioners and New South Wales Health into that ecosystem would only strengthen it further, absolutely. And like I said, I think another green shoot was the consultations by New South Wales Health to digitise the Blue Book. I do think that that just helps us allow for more developmental nuance and gets people the targeted information that they need. Speaking from Down syndrome, there are completely different growth charts, weight charts, developmental milestones. And in the current hard copy form, those families are left behind. So, there'd be some green shoots at the moment that I'd recommend.
Thank you. Ms Sarin, what about Community Migrant Resource Centre? What would you say is working well out there at the moment?
In terms of playgroup or in terms of...
No, no, in terms of these young children getting access to these health, developmental health checks in that first five years?
Oh, okay. So, as a part of Community Migrant Resource Centre, we do have supported playgroups. And what I have seen in the playgroups is that the parents, it's the comfort level that the parents get. That's the first thing. And once they are at comfort and there is a way with, and because most of them are from Cal community, sorry, I'm just nervous. So, most of them are from Cal community and meeting people from the similar community. Let's say I have a playgroup and there are 10 of people coming from Afghan, five of them are coming from Indian communities, some subcontinent and all. So, meeting, so first of all, making that community connection is quite helpful. And now they're, sorry, can I come back to the question and you can?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I need to...
Can I just emphasise? We are here with the great privilege of tapping into your incredible knowledge. So, you do us a great service by sharing anything that you can with us. So, we thank you in advance for everything.
You're the expert.
You want me to, I'll jump across.
Maybe even just, sorry, can I just rephrase it? Maybe just like, do you have parent, like in that environment of bringing mums together, does it make it easier for them to talk about all the things? How to access services and like, because they've got the comfort of...
Yes, thank you. Thank you for helping me out there. But that's true. Like, when the parents are, the parents are in that space where they feel safe and they're able to communicate in their own language, it is quite helpful. And, and being a migrant myself, it is quite easy for me to connect to the parents and everything and tell them. I do tend to notice, because I run playgroup personally. So, and I do bring a wealth of knowledge by bringing in experts and having information sessions in the playgroup. So, I might get people from Service New South Wales coming in, from Health Department coming in, talking about very specific topics. Like recently, I had people coming from Department of Health talking about mental health and stress managing kids, if the kids are having any issues. So, it was more focused on the mothers, but at the end of the day, it would be helping the kids. So, basically, educating the mothers and the parents or the grandparents who are there in the playgroup is quite helpful to be able to detect any issues with the children at a very early age. Like, let's say if we are having an activity going in and we can actually see what's happened, what child is doing. So, let's say we see there are some delays in a particular child. The easiest way is to just have a conversation with the mother and see what's going on at home, what's happening, what is she noticing? And this is where the conversation starts, whereas we can then encourage the parents to seek expert help, to visit their general practitioners or see a nurse. So, that I feel is really, really great because that's, it's basically grassroots level, like really going to grassroots level and engaging with the community at that point.
Ms Casca, can I just go back to you for a second? Because that sounds like a wonderful model, but I'm wondering, have you chosen through your playgroups that you facilitate?
Yeah.
To try to bring in those external services?
Yeah.
Or is this something that Playgroup of Service New South Wales encourage as part of that process or you're not that specific about it?
We absolutely encourage. So, with those 550 playgroups a week that we either run or auspice, we either run them directly or we subcontract to organisations. But there is no overarching framework or engagement with health, in this case, of that drop-in service. So, it is quite localised, which has its benefits because you do want to tailor it. You don't want to come out with a curriculum about your playgroups, you're going to do this, but then tailor it to the local needs. But I do think it's almost like a two-tier approach. I think there is an opportunity to have a bit more of a formalised partnership like in the early childhood sector and actually bring the screenings into the playgroups. But in terms of accessing health educators, even the playgroups that we run ourselves, it's very localised and it's almost like we're individually reaching out. There's no systemic way about it, which is definitely, could be improved.
Sounds like a good model. What about for you guys?
What's working well?
I was going to say EPOC, is that how you refer to yourself?
That's our research collaboration.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess I'd like to talk about the two programmes I mentioned in my opening statement. So firstly, Healthy Beginnings.
Yes.
So, Healthy Beginnings is a programme that provides additional support for parents around healthy feeding, healthy eating, around active play and around parent-child interactions. It's currently underway in Sydney Local Health District and South Western Sydney Local Health District and some components in Hunter, New England. And that programme has been shown to be effective in terms of increasing breastfeeding, in terms of BMI or wait for length at 12 months. And it has, in a research environment, been adapted to Arabic-speaking and Mongolian-speaking, Chinese-speaking, I'm sorry, Chinese-speaking families and shown to be feasible and acceptable to participants. But that, that's in a research environment. So, I guess one of the things that is challenging for groups like ours is that we can show things to be effective being funded by research, by NHMIC or someone like that. But then we need a commitment from government to actually roll that out and to make it part of routine care. So, that programme is something that is not only effective but also cost-effective. So, been shown to be cost-effective. The other programme that's underway in Victoria is the Infant Programme that provides training for health professionals. That training, again, is ready to go and has been evaluated and is effective and, and, you know, very much appreciated by the professionals who do it. And that programme offers parent support, extra parent support at three, six, nine and 12 months with key messages.
An infant programme in Victoria is embedded in the local maternal and child health services, which is slightly different in that the nurses are in local government, instead of state government, and they have a Green Book.
Yeah.
But also the infant programme is being taken up by early childhood educators and community health programmes. So, as mentioned last week, if parents aren't engaged in the health services, you have parenting programmes in libraries where this can be talked about by community facilitators.
And obviously can be adapted to meet the needs of a particular community.
Two questions for you. Did you say, oh, sorry, how long has the infant programme been rolled out in Victoria?
So, that, so the infant programme...
Just roughly?
Yeah, builds on over 15 years of research, but has been, has been widespread rollout for the last three to four years?
Since 2020, yes.
Yeah.
And, I'm sorry, Ms Chang, did you say that the nurses are employed by local government in Victoria?
It's a different model, yeah. So, it's a, it's a local government model rather than the child and family health, maternal and child health services are provided by local government rather than by, it's just a different model, yeah, different model of service provision.
Is it related to that?
Yeah.
Yep?
Is it a more effective model? Because I'm a bit confused. Back in the day, you know, 100 years ago when I had my children, I thought the council provided a community nurse, well, they certainly provided a space.
A building, yeah.
The building, so was it the hospital back before we had health districts? So, can you recall what that service was?
I am pretty old, you're quite right.
No, no, I'm old.
I think, I think it's really the quality of the service that determines the effectiveness. I don't, I don't really think it matters who pays for it.
But how effective was it back 30 years ago, say?
Well, we had a very different, we had a very different population and we didn't have the problem of rapid weight gain 30 years ago because, because we had it, when I first started in this business, well, in this business of obesity prevention, we really worried about people who were formula-feeding. We really worried about them diluting formula because we were worried, they wanted to make it last longer. Now, we worry about them over-concentrating it because they think it'll help their baby grow bigger and might help the baby sleep. So, things have changed in the time that I've been working in this area.
So, what's, we just, you know, I've been hearing at hearings about a lack of coordination or if, if you were, if you had the ability to change the system, what would you do?
Yes, I think you would have co-location of services like multicultural workers, like interpreters, like child and family health nurses, who would, with the local community, help to co-design programmes or to maybe co-design or co-work together to adapt programmes like Healthy Beginning and Infant that have shown to be effective. You would get those to be made culturally appropriate because we know that different cultural groups might have different attitudes towards growth and development, especially around the size of a baby. Because some, some cultural groups really do like a bigger baby because they think it's a sign of health and wellbeing.
Do you know what the, like the states divided up into health districts?
Yes.
Is there a, I suppose, a need or a requirement for every health district to provide the rudimentary services or can they just sort of cut corners? Or can they, do you know how it works?
I would, I would, I would, I would take some of that on notice, but as a general principle, I think it is, it is, we do need to provide services and not cut corners when it comes to healthy growth and development because this is our future. And, and prevention is, even though we, we under-invest in prevention, it, it really pays enormous dividends. So, I guess as a prevention person, I would like, really like to see us doing as much work on preventing conditions as we can.
So, for us in rural areas, you know, the idea of centralisation of services to a bigger regional centre is not working. So, you know, it's with the tyranny of distance. I mean, we can have people that are four or five hours from that service. Is that, is that good enough?
Well, look, I guess, if I may just plug one other part of the research work that we've done, the Infant Programme in Victoria is accompanied by an app called My Baby Now. That app is, has been designed in collaboration with, with healthcare professionals, uses the best available evidence, matches ages and stages type health checks. So, that is a, a good adjunct to face-to-face care. I'm not suggesting for a moment it should be necessarily a standalone service, but it could be of assistance to people who work in resource poor areas. But I guess there are greater experts on provision of healthcare services than I am, who, who would be better placed to discuss how healthcare services are provided in regional and rural areas. But of, of course, I believe that all of our citizens deserve the best possible healthcare.
I'm going to have to go, Jill.
Oh, you've got to go?
Yeah, I better catch the bird.
All right. Do you want to get on the plane?
Hope you enjoyed meeting your new granddaughter.
Yes.
Member Puri has a new granddaughter.
There you go, very timely.
Now, I'll do the measurement to measure her and see where she's going. Okay.
And I was just going to add, I was just going to add a comment to Mrs Dalton's very valid points about like our regional and rural health access and delivery rudimentary services, yes, okay, and fairly equitable. But as soon as there's any hint of a delay or an ongoing diagnosis, everything falls out the window. And it's not just the tyranny of distance, it's the accommodation costs to the families, all of the stress that that comes with it out of place. So, I think we need to look at, or re-shift from people having to go to the services and the services coming to them because it's also the timeliness of that. We see a degradation of the diagnoses and the development because of the delays, the travel and all those things to get into the centralised places.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Deputy Chair Trish Doyle from the Blue Mountain.
Thank you. Before I ask my question, which segues well into the point you just made there, Emily, thank you all for the fantastic work and research that you do. And it's a privilege for us to hear from you today to inform the work that we do. See you, Helen.
Thanks, Helen. Thanks for joining us this morning, really appreciate it.
So, on, on that point, is something I've been actually following closely on another committee that I'm on with you, regional, rural and remote healthcare access, is telehealth an appropriate way to deliver these early childhood checks for called communities particularly? Do you have some commentary, anyone have any commentary on, on that? Whether you've heard feedback that would help inform the work that we're doing?
I can comment on that. Certainly, that was a model that was, that was instigated during the COVID pandemic. And so, it, it was, Sydney Local Health District did deliver those checks by over Zoom or Teams. And it, my recollection of the research was that it was, it was doable, it was feasible, but it wasn't as...
Ideal.
It's not ideal. And it, it, what you lose is that potential for creating community. And, and, you know, as you know, with, with any sort of health promotion, you tend to get an amplification of the effects of that health promotion if you get people together from community who discuss that, that particular intervention. So, you lose, you lose all of that.
Ms Sarin? Ms. Raine, did you want to make a comment on that?
Yeah, I think as a first point of contact, it's amazing to have telehealth because, you know, it can be reached right at the home. But in the long run, it would not be adequate because assisting a child in person to just the parents saying what's going on and the health practitioner is unable to see or an expert unable to see the child in exactly what's happening at that point, would not give an adequate picture of what's going on with the child. So as a first point of contact, amazing because it had, had helped during the COVID where we just could not go to a point where right now the parents may not be able to go for family commitments because they can't travel or whatever, amazing. But eventually it has to be face-to-face, it has to be where the practitioner is seeing the child.
Yep. So not standalone.
Yeah, it can't be standalone. For the rural community, I understand it would be amazing. But eventually it would have to be where either the health practitioner is going to this community or somehow the community is able to come to the practitioner.
Yep. No, fair enough. Emily, did you want to make a comment?
Probably just echoing that, we have feedback from our regional and rural families through our Play Connect program. If it's telehealth or nothing, we'll take telehealth. And I'd probably go further, not just even as a first step, it is good there as part of a complementary ecosystem, but the other three prongs I'd probably add to it, probably not surprisingly, is connection with the playgroup. Some sort of mobile servicing of that area, absolutely. And then potentially if travel is needed, how can we support those families to travel to the centre? So if you kind of take the four together, but I do think that telehealth, our families tell us that is a really powerful resource in regional and rural because they are getting at least some sort of timely access. But agree with the points too, there are some caveats around that, about the depth and probably reliability of that assessment. And also if you think about a potential unintended consequence could be then that in that local area, if telehealth does become the main, then the expertise of that workforce in the area would by virtue be depleted over time as well because they wouldn't be seeing those families because they're going to the telehealth option.
I'm, I'm, I'm just interested in this, not only from the sort of professional perspective and how it impacts what we're looking at and access to childhood checks and, and the development and the monitoring of that development. But my son works with ambulance and he's just been developing a sort of a telehealth virtual health model for his colleagues out in rural and remote areas. And the feedback initially is how positive it's been with children. Which, I don't know, one, one, on one hand, I think, is it because they're always looking at screens? Or is it, is there, is there something in, in the model that, that's, that we can pinpoint to say this, this works well? But I think that the point that you made, Vana, is it has to be supplemented with a face-to-face and that 3D viewing of, of a child. And it's particularly with communication with called communities, it would be a bit, a bit tough if you're only relied on, on the telehealth.
Because you can't make connections over the telehealth, you know? And the connection is really, really important to really understand what's going on with a child.
Hmm. And our families tell us it works for children in some ways because they're in their home environment. They're not being taken to the doctor's surgery and for our, so they're a bit more relaxed. In some ways you can get a deeper assessment, seeing them in place. And also our families like it because to my earlier point, they can access it out of the traditional hours, particularly for working families, it does give that. Which generally in regional and rural communities do have the shorter hours.
Those services too.
So we, all of our regional services, we auspice with local, well-recognised, longstanding organisations. So we don't do the overlay from Sydney and provide them, we partner locally, we invest locally. Also with Echos as well, we're looking at those partnerships. So we go in local, keep it local, we're sort of, I suppose, more the peak body governing entity. And then we support them with capacity building, practice guidance and some consistency across our playgroups and also share best practices of, hey, this worked here. So we work really well with the local community. And also the adjunctive that is, we're supporting employment in regional and rural areas as well.
And so is it the playgroup itself that decides what kind of service they'd like to, like the mums in that playgroup?
Yes, very locally driven, yes. But there is a playgroup facilitator overlaying that, then we provide that coordinator and lead. So it's a bit two-way. We will also make soft suggestions of things they might like to think about because people don't know what they don't know, but it's very locally driven in terms of the demand and the particular nuances of the playgroups, that's the beauty of them. They can be, we have some that are very specific to particular language groups, to particular, very particular First Nations communities, very particular disability diagnoses. And then that drives what that playgroup does. We certainly don't come at it with sort of a centralised approach. Yeah, it's really important.
Thank you. And, and my next question is to all the panel. We've heard earlier today that there seems to be a lack of coordination between departments. So people, so organisations are working in silos, so there might be, could you comment on that and, and maybe offer ways we could improve that? We would like to go first. Ms. Chan?
I, I, I guess, I think we, we do, we clearly need more bi-cultural workers. We clearly need more translation services that are co-located with, with child and family health services. And we, we need them to be really specific to, you know, specifically tailored to our, to communities where there's a high concentration of, of migrants from, from different areas. So I guess, again, I guess I'm not an expert on, on how these services are funded, but it, it just seems really clear that, that they need to be available to, right from the start of a program, all the way through to the actual care with the family because they, they need to be involved in terms of developing the resources and the materials and the, the language and the interventions because we need to make sure that all of those things are culturally appropriate right from the, the start. So involvement right from the beginning, not just from, not just at the point of consultation.
Oh, sorry. Can I clarify more as to when you say the departments are not coordinating? Could you just?
So we heard earlier that the, the different sectors, so the lack of coordination between departments and community organisations and the healthcare sector.
Oh, okay. So lack of coordination.
So, so, so you're, you're working in isolation rather than being a coordinated, coordinated group?
Targeted.
I think of, because every, every organisation has its own agendas that they are following. And to find a common ground, that is something I believe every, I'm sorry, I'm just, can I take it on notice and get back to you on this? Because I, I have not really come across too much of, you know, non-coordination as such. I have felt everyone has worked together, but, but if you, if this has been stated, then there is something that I have missed. So I would like to take it on notice and come back to you guys.
That's really good to hear though, that your experience is that everyone's working together.
Yeah, because whenever I've asked of any help or coordination with any other department, they have been very willing and have delivered. So I am, so I had not come across it, so unfortunately I cannot answer that question, but I'll take it on notice and get back. Yeah.
I think we experienced the silos across different departments and then across the different levels of government as well, and that does cause confusion for families. And if I particularly narrow down to when the checks are done, if there is a disability and you go into NDIS land as well, and there's private practice and there's your local health district and the PHN, and there's a lot of people involved. We do find in regional areas, we do seem to collaborate a lot better generally because of that community approach. One thing, maybe I'm optimistic here though, I do think that the new foundational supports model coming in with the NDIS reforms will make this area better for children. And I particularly like the proposal of having some sort of navigation coordinator support for children and families and bringing the departments together a lot more. So we've been working on that with disability, health and education at the moment. And even in the consults today, health is the biggest one that families in these early years have the biggest interface with. And so we need to bring down those silos. So I think that that presents us with an opportunity and New South Wales is definitely leading the way in implementing that from our meetings with the minister here last year. So that's a great start and I think that that's optimistic, but the barriers are definitely there. And even amongst us as community organisations, we almost play that quasi navigator connector role, which is great, but it detracts us from our core business because we do it obviously to support the families. But those silos are there and definitely real.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. I was very excited, Professor Danny Wilson, when you mentioned the word breastfeeding. Because it's the first time in the inquiry that the words have been mentioned and.
I could talk about it all day.
Yeah, well, from my personal experience, the intervention that helped support me to be able to breastfeed my first child, even though all the naysayers told me that it couldn't happen, but I was determined. And I think that the, and sorry, I would like to thank you all for being here. It's wonderful. I'm very excited about the fact that we're in Parramatta today. Everyone always knows I'm always paranoid about Parramatta. But it's great to be able to have you here and to hear all your expertise. But I would like to talk about breastfeeding and the connection between what I perceive as a reduction in the, in the number of mums that are breastfeeding and how that correlates, how you think that correlates with the services or lack of services being provided with the blue book. Now, I know that you mentioned, Professor, that, that there are no, there's no requirement or encouragement to attend a service between six and 12 months. But I want to talk about that secondly, but if you could just talk a little bit about the blue book in relation to breastfeeding, I'd be very appreciative.
Hmm, okay. So New South Wales Health has for a long time had a very strong commitment to encouraging and supporting breastfeeding. And we do have very good initiation rates of breastfeeding in New South Wales, but we do have very early drop-off in terms of women ceasing breastfeeding. And often, often parents will stop breastfeeding or commits and commits formula feeding without consulting a health professional. So that I think speaks to access and, and, and might be more than just being able to get an appointment. But again, being able to get an appointment in language. But certainly, certainly breastfeeding is, is front of mind for child and family health nurses. And, and they are often also lactation consultants, but also have access to lactation consultant services within the local health districts in those, in that early establishment stage. There's a whole bunch of things that we need to do as a community to get women, to help women to breastfeed for longer and to breastfeed exclusively for longer. And now I've lost my train of thought about.
That's okay.
You wanted to know specifically to the blue book, didn't you? So I think there's, there is lots of support within the blue book, but we need, we need more. And we need women to be able to access help and support when they need it rather than just, rather than popping off to the pharmacy and being told, yep, here you go, here's, here's the solution in the tin. Yes.
Can I just, you know, ask a question before you go to another topic?
Oh, no, I was just going to ask the others there.
Oh, yep.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Vana, in language, how do, do you feel that it's an issue with, with mums?
Not with the parents that I have been working with because they're all coming from migrant communities, child communities. And usually breastfeeding is the way to be. But how long would they be doing? That's a completely different situation. Depending on whether obviously the mother has the capacity to breastfeed. Now, I would have to also take up with this lactation consultant now, lack of knowledge. I think that's the biggest challenge. Let's say first time parent, they don't have a rulebook to which, how they're. Going to follow. So what's the first point of contact? It will be the doctors, the nurses that they're coming across when the baby is born. Now, a blue book is given to a, given to the parents and say, hey, follow it. But for a person who's coming from a migrant community, who has just come here, does not have the language, does not understand, for him, blue book is just another bunch of paper, does nothing else. So not having that communication between the health provider and the parent, maybe in their language or maybe a peer support group, maybe a multicultural support worker, whoever there is, to help them understand what is this going to do for them and to able to follow that. Because unless they understand why this is important, they're not going to follow. It's as simple as that. So that also goes to breastfeeding. For, for people coming from countries like Syria, like Afghanistan, even from India, lactation consultant is not a thing. So not having a knowledge about these kind of things, health profession, you know, these health professionals are available, they are not going to go for them. So having that conversation within the community is really, really important. And involving peer support groups is really important. So as I said, breastfeeding is a norm. And I, I mean, within my playgroup, I see mums breastfeeding. So it is something which is acceptable, which is a norm. But how long would they be breastfeeding or do, and let's say if they are facing any difficulties, they know who to approach, that's a completely different.
May I also add that in our research and in our experience, starting that conversation antinatally is absolutely vital. You can't wait till the baby's here before you, because, you know, if women, if, if antenatal support tends to help to switch mums from I'll breastfeed if I can to I will be breastfeeding. So that, that's absolutely essential as well. Thanks.
What I'll add, I'm actually take my playgroups hat off, wear my Down syndrome hat now. It speaks to the point about support and knowledge. We hear from our families, I've been in the Down syndrome world for 20 years, that lactation consultants in general seem to have really dipped off. And my mum, who has six kids, has said that too. But Down syndrome, and it speaks to antenatal care as well, all Down syndrome babies are born with hypotonia. They need specific breastfeeding techniques. So that support and knowledge isn't there. And again, because they're beholden to what is a relatively generic blue book that doesn't spell any of that out, then they come to associations like my former one and try and get that support. But there's no expertise out there, that's really diluted. And so we're seeing a lot of babies with Down syndrome. Probably separate the immunisation schedule from the developmental checks. I reflect personally that I did the immunisations and I got followed up if I. Didn't. But if I miss the developmental checks, sometimes I'd just go in and out of the nurse. They didn't really follow me up on that. But when I look specifically at that six to 12 month timeframe, whether it is obesity or any other risk factor, I think there's a lot of things particularly collateral developmental indicator of maybe we need to check in as to why. So I was doing all the milk and the oat cookies and the apricots and the fenugreek and all the things and staying up all hours and, and it didn't work. And literally everyone was like, oh, well, you tried, doll. But actually what we found out 10 months later was that was a sign of tongue tie that could have saved us a whole heap of speech investment and other things and delays. And I probably could have continued to breastfeed, but it wasn't seen as a developmental check of, or maybe we need to check in.
Yeah, yeah. And we talked, sorry, Liza, we talked about this last week about the fact that these early checks, like my own son, his lack of sucking reflex, then that connection with autism later on, if you have these regular checks, people can check this stuff out earlier. Sorry, Hilop, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to ask about, on, on the same subject, we used to have the Nursing Mothers Association.
We still do, Australian Breastfeeding Association.
But do they still have the, like, because, you know, I'm still connected with a lot of those mums that were in nursing mothers when I was, and you would sit around and talk about all of these things. And then you could get help, I mean, there was help on the phone, there was lactations. Is that still?
Australian Breastfeeding Association is still going and going strong. They have, they have, like a lot of places adapted their model. Certainly when I was breastfeeding my kids, we did meet in people's homes.
Yes, that's what I did.
And I trained as a councillor. But that, that model has changed in that people now meet in, in, you know, libraries and in cafes and in places that are more public.
You get a sticker for your office too.
Yeah.
To welcome.
Oh, that'd be great. Breastfeeding welcome, yeah, yes. Um, the, the 24 hour helpline is still around. And they have a, a very good website, um, to support mums. And it's one of the, one of the recommended resources in the Blue Book. Um, so.
The Nursing Mothers, you know, Association used to come around to the hospital and introduce themselves to you when you just delivered your baby. And I mean, now you tend to leave hospital within 24 hours. So you may not be connected with as many of those organisations as we used to be.
That's, that's possible too, but they certainly are one of the recommended resources.
Thank you. So can I just? So thanks, thanks, Faz. And just going back to when, um, Professor, when you mentioned that there is no recommended Blue Book check between six and 12 months. Can you provide a case study or examples? And if you can't off now, like if in, of poor diet and the impact this has on babies and children long term because of the fact that we don't have those checks?
Absolutely. So, um, I, I guess there's a, there's a couple of things I'd, I'd just like to mention about that six to 12 months of life. So one of them, and this is Helo's area of expertise, um, but one of them is that the teeth erupt. So we, we really need to start to emphasise early dental care. And I think there was a really lovely case study in the first, um, group this morning that, that I would refer you to in terms of, of, of teeth. That couldn't have been better. Um, so one of the things that, that is a risk factor for child obesity and is a very sticky risk factor in terms of being difficult to reverse is rapid weight gain in the, in the first year of life. It tends to really present itself in that second six months. Um, and so that's when a regular growth or, and development check would identify a child who's crossing growth sentience. And that would be an opportunity to really dig into what, how's this child being fed? And, and, um, and, you know, how are you feeding them? So you feeding them responsively? Or are you sort of forcing them to finish that bottle? Or, um, are you giving them top-ups after the solids? And, you, you know, are you overfeeding that child? And also what are you feeding the child? So how, how, how's the milk been prepared? What kind of solids is the baby getting? How frequently? What portion size? Those sorts of things. So a baby that has rapid weight gain is much more likely to be overweight or above a healthy weight as a toddler. And then the longer you have that excess weight, the more likely you are to keep that excess weight and start to develop the kind of health problems that we see associated with child obesity. So these are things that you would typically see in adults. So, um, risk factors for cardiovascular disease, for type 2 diabetes, there's a thing called fatty liver. But also growth, also psychological problems, um, around self-esteem and bullying. Um, and, and also, um, things like, uh, things that, things like the way the, the skeleton develops can be affected. So we would really strongly advocate that rapid weight gain is identified early and nibbed in the bud. Um, because we don't want to see an increase in the approximately 20% of kids who are already above a healthy weight entering school. So in those preschool years.
Thank you. Any other?
Do you want to go? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay, um, what I have noticed with the parents is, um, the ease of availability of junk food. And the parents are time poor because they have so many commitments. I have to make the statement that in Australia, we live by the time, literally. So every minute of our time is dedicated to, we are going to do this, we've got to do that. And that makes the parents' time poor. So if the parent is time poor, they have more commitments. They are not going to be sitting down making healthy food. They will give the child whatever is easily accessible to them, uh, and most of it is junk food. There's no nutritional value in that, though it might state on the wrapper, yes, it's amazing, but it's not. So that's one of the things I've noticed that the kids, the parents are feeding their kids. It's not that they want to, it's just because it's easy. And also, um, we talk about, you know, the, you know, we need to have three serves of veggies and everything for the children. Now, if we look at the price of the vegetables that are available, the parents are not really going for it because they can't afford it. So it's also the financial aspect of it that I've noticed that the parents are not going in for things that should be feeding the kids. Um, I do believe sometimes parents do overfeed the child, as you mentioned, is because, um, I'm doing something, the child is bothering me right now because he wants to play and I can't. So let me give him some food with the screen. And this is what, again, is causing another thing. So there is a multitude of things which is causing a weight gain, that we're talking a rapid weight gain that that's happening. Um, so it's a very complex issue that can't just sort of said, oh, this is it, or this is the way that should go, or this is the way. So I feel that there is, and also the parents who are coming from overseas, they do have certain food groups that they go to, or they tend to. So, um, let's say, let's say, even if they go to a nutritionist, do they understand their food, um, preferences? So it also causes, uh, so there is a gap there too, where people coming from different countries would have a different way of feeding. Uh, like from, in, I know from my own personal, uh, even when my babies were born, my mom would say, oh, you know, give them this or give them that. But when I'm talking to, uh, a, um, a nurse and she said, no, that's going to cause more issues. So now I'm like stuck between my mom telling me something and and I'm being a first time parent, I don't know who to listen to, you know, so, so. To communicate with each other. Um, they may not be free or they may not be comfortable talking about things. So I have noticed that. So we, uh, in my own organisation, we have been talking about encouraging more dads or maybe having dad groups. So encouraging dads to come in to see, because we have realised that bringing up a child has to be both parents. It cannot be just one, like, one parent being involved. Uh, because that's just too much pressure on one. Uh, and dad not knowing what's going on, um, with the child. Because what I've also noticed is, let's say if a child has a development delays, if the dad has not seen the child, or rather that, it's not that they're not seeing the child, but they're not seeing the issues involved with the child, because they say, oh, it's a small child, he'll grow out of it. And they're not understanding or they're not going to, um, a, a health check or a developmental check. They don't accept it. And the non-acceptance of a diagnosis is another issue that I've noticed.
Yeah.
So bringing dad into the fold has, is really, really important. And that is what we have been talking within our organisation as to how to encourage dads to come in.
That's excellent. And, and have you come across different families and, and different understandings? Um, depending on what the cultural background is of what healthy child development is?
Um, okay, different, um, most of the families that I come across, uh, again, I'll keep referring because they are all South Asian, sort of the, um, world. Um, the understanding is dads are not involved, not involved. It's like not involved in, uh, everyday, uh, you know, upbringing of the child. They may be involved in, yeah, taking them to, I mean, I've only seen mums taking them for, um, parks. I have hardly seen dads involved in that. Um, very few dads, and it's quite unfortunate because coming back again, I'm from Indian background, my dad was not involved. And even with my husband, I saw that he was not involved, even though he had been in Australia for over 20, 25 years. So it's, it's a cultural thing. It's, it's something which is.
And, and on that point, like leaving aside mums or dads.
Yeah.
But on that, on that point at the Migrant Resource Centre.
Yeah.
Do you often have different families that come in and they have a different understanding to the models and the systems of what is considered, um, you know, uh, healthy childhood, childhood checks? Is there, is there a bit of a clash there sometimes with the cold communities and?
I think there, there is a lack of knowledge, really. They feel if the child is okay running about, eating, all good. Um, a child is naughty because he's displaying some behaviours, that's because the child is naughty. They're not really understanding it.
Okay.
Um, and even if it has been sort of conveyed to them in a very soft approach, they still do not want to accept that it cannot happen to me.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's as simple as that.
Thank you.
So yes, there are, there is a huge difference.
Difference. Yeah. Wonderful. Um, did you want to comment on that question?
Yeah, I think that the gendered roles exist. We'd be remiss not to say that. But I do think that there are some levers in place and some things that we're doing to bridge that gap. So I do think as an overarching structural lever, the changes to parental leave have helped. Parents tell us that dads tell us, I can now go to the therapy and support at home. So that has been great. I think from our service perspective, building parental capacity is that other lever that we as playgroups are trying to influence. So this Saturday, actually, I'm going to Rosehill for a dad's teddy bears picnic, um, and it's on a Saturday, so that tells you something, right? Out of work hours. And again, it's that soft entry point for dads. I think thrusting them into a check environment or a breastfeeding class might be a big step for some of them. But if we can engage them in a playgroup that's specific to dads in, again, localised, in their local area, then we're finding that that's great. So that's an emerging area for us, definitely. And then I think that the other, and sorry, as part of that, we will bring in things like what does healthy childhood development look like? They're not just sort of sit and learn sessions. I think the other lever that we can pull, um, not necessarily just at playgroups in New South Wales, but systemically, is that attitudinal barrier. Things like putting dads in more of the campaigns around early childhood development checks. Um, I'd love to see a bit more research into showing the benefits of dads being involved in that space. Not just for the child, but for family capacity, mental health. Getting, um, women back into the workforce, the benefits to the dads themselves as well. So I think that's a lever that I'd like to see some investment in and we would love to help with that, given our reach. And I also think that, again, probably speaking to that antenatal stage, self-reflecting as well. The language that we give, which parent we speak to about these things and engaging dads nice and early in that space as well, and just being cautious of that.
Thank you. Did you want to comment?
There is certainly longstanding research around the, um, importance of, of, um, the support of the other partner around breastfeeding. And there's a real emerging, emerging area of interest around the role of, of fathers in research. So I, I, I mean, in, in infant feeding, activity, sleep, um, and and play. So I, I think that's, um, I think, I think we're really, that, that's a really an area of research that's really taking off. Yeah.
Great.
I also wanted to add on your question about, uh, culture expectations of health. Uh, child and family health nurses are working culturally sensitive ways. Uh, for example, some cultures might not expect the child should be crawling around the ground because the ground is dirty and cold. So nurses, nurses will be working with parents to engage them in terms of what a child should be doing at that age. But that does need more engagement time. And if you do want more time to work outside those, um, scheduled checks, it works on an individual basis within the local health service in terms of can you have those extra checks? Natural to staffing and time.
Well, that's a good point, Ms Chang, actually. Staffing and time to actually explore a little bit further rather than just tick boxes.
Intake, yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Um, we literally just have a couple of minutes left, um, in 60 seconds or less. Is there any final comment that anybody would like to make? I'll go from right, my right, to left.
You go.
There's a shortage of child and family health nurses noted in the Australian workforce, um, voted federal governments, and improved staffing in local health districts would help with addressing health and development checks likely.
And we need more bi-cultural workers. We need, um, more support on the ground so that we can deliver um, evidence-based obesity prevention programmes that would also incorporate healthy growth and development checks.
Um, I feel that training people who are working with the families, they may not be health professionals, but training them up to be able to identify things, to be able to talk. And obviously more multicultural people in, uh, in the workforce would be really, really great.
I think my thing's probably just repeating peer-to-peer support and capacity building is critical delivery in place and maybe some flex around out of hours, because it helps address also the engagement of dads and others in that space. Uh, I definitely think that soft entry points, not a surprise, are really key, but not just in playgroups, in anything. And I think, like I said at the start, obviously this inquiry is looking at the checks themselves, but looking at the before and the after that check and the support and the knowledge that sits around that. And then to my earlier point, I think just the milestones within those checks, I would advocate for those to be reviewed so that we are getting in a bit more frequently and a bit earlier. And even if some of those are a quick telehealth call, even for Metro, it's great for us Metro ones too. So, yeah, just reviewing that, those softer touch points.
Thank you. You really squeezed a lot in that last 60 seconds. Uh, thank you all sincerely for appearing before us today. You will be sent a copy of the transcript, um, for correction. We will also email to you any questions that have been taken on notice, so you don't need to worry about that. We will send those questions out to you. Um, and we as a committee may also develop some supplementary questions that we will send to you in addition to that. Um, again, sincere thanks for spending some of your precious time with us today. Your expertise has been greatly appreciated and entirely enlightening. The committee will now break for lunch and return at 1:30 PM. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.